This meeting is now called for. Road call met for?
Trustee Lewis.
Present.
Trustee Franklin.
Present.
Trustee Bowden.
Present.
Trustee McFadden.
Present.
Trustee Jenkins Bell.
Present.
Trustee Brooks.
Present.
And Mayor Rudy.
Present.
Stand for our pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
General public comments. Come on ahead, she. Octavia Wilkinson.
Hello?
Nothing to get.
Yeah, this might be the wrong sheet. Wait a minute, now, let me see. No, no, those transferred. This is it, okay. So, look, Gloria Sellers, Donna Connor, Lottie Bennenfield, Jennifer Hill, Vivian Covington. Oh, that's, that's.
That's not in it. That's the line.
That's not in it.
It was Laura Luddy, and those names were transferred.
Okay, so we start off with Vivian Covington?
No, we don't. I'm not the first person to sign.
This was the original one, I'm sorry, Octavia.
Yeah, I think those right people were lying there.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so, no Octavia Wilkinson, Gloria Sellers, Donna Cannon, Lottie Bennenfield, Jennifer Hill, Vivian Covington.
Evening, everyone. Vivian Covington, 723 Wright Road, University Park, Illinois. I would like to announce that I am deputy registrar, and I would be registering people. I would put it on next door, so anyone that's interested, please contact me, and I'll be more than happy to help you. Also, I'd like to know, I asked you, any specific reason why you changed your seat names?
It was the mayor's preference.
Okay. Oh, wait, that's my phone on.
What's the legal?
What is going on at the course?
What's legal?
My church wanted to rent it, and she could not call anyone, nor back, return the call, and one person did say it, they said that they couldn't afford, they wanted to land that line dancing, and it was a thousand dollars an hour. And the other lady from my church wanted to participate, to have something here, and she could get no answer at all. The next thing is, what is, could you give me a status on what's going on at the town, in our industrial park? There's a new facility. Anything going on with that? And also, another question, are there opening with the planning issue? If so, I'm interested in being remembered.
What was your last question, Miss Covington?
What is going on in the?
You should know, our last question, sir.
Plan.
Is there anything? I'll check this.
Planning issue, is there any openings there? I'd like to remember.
I don't think there are, I think it's full right now. I'll check and see.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
My question on the industrial park, does, there's activity, I see there's a new building being built, is there anything we need to know as residents?
Which, which one?
There's one specifically near Central.
Is that KC, is that KC maybe? I'm not sure. We got a lot of new businesses going on, so, it's on Central KC Transport, I forgot.
I don't recall it being on the, on your chart. So, does anybody, can anybody respond to me?
I just gave you the information, that's about all I can give right now.
Anybody else? Any trustees? Do you guys know what's going on?
What are the new businesses?
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Sure, trustee.
I am village manager Scott. I wanted to know what is going on at 855 Central Avenue in, on, in industrial park, and when did it cross the board? And the planning committee, I happen to see the agenda as well, when it went through the planning committee, because I, you know, COVID, we're calling, we're calling.
Ms. Bell, you were saying, going on where in the industrial?
Eighty, eight fifty, it's 855 Central Avenue. It's some form of a trucking company, or trucking hub, or, truck, it's not our, our truck stop, so, because it's, it's next to.
I didn't, and that's not, it's on Central Avenue, on the east side of the street.
So, what is that, and when did it come, and who approved it?
All right, you want to, just use a lot of awareness.
Village manager Scott. I remember you asking me about this before, trustee, I'm gonna look into it, because I'm, it may be some type of extension, I'm not positive, but let me look into that. Yeah.
But has it come to the board? That's my question, has it come to the board?
It did come before the board, but I'll pull that information for you, okay?
I appreciate it. Also, thank you so much, I really appreciate the part, talking about a part district, however, do people realize that that's going to be a tax?
Ma'am, your pastor, three minutes, thank him very much.
Pick it up, I'll be back. Leave that.
Gina Williams?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And again, condolences to Ms. Scott on the loss of her father.
Thank you.
I just want to touch on a couple of things. One, I believe we still don't have a chief of police, and I don't know if the village manager was aware that we had a wonderful chief of police, she was the first female black police chief at Will County in University Park. She went to check on something for us, which was part of her job, at the golf course, and we never did find out what happened to the equipment, none of that. But how is it she gets assaulted, when she goes back up there on a separate occasion, and she's fighting? But the person that assaulted her is still working. And I look at all of y'all, because this makes no sense, as trustees, especially the females, I would think y'all would speak up. And I don't want to hear that garbage about, that's why she was not, that's why she wasn't fighting. If she had reprimands or anything, then we should've been hearing about that. But everything is hush-hush, but that's okay, the drama is coming. The other thing I want to talk about is the American Rescue Plan. There's a lot of people out here that's hurting, village manager Scott, people have utilities cut off, water cut off, you name it, that went through COVID, they didn't have rent money, they were out of work. And we have funds, and we're not using them to help them, when the city of Chicago and Cook County is making sure those people have at least three to five hundred a month for the next two years, but we have nothing. And these are people talking to me, neighbors, inbox, texting, calling, and I, I don't understand how y'all can sit there and numb. I don't understand how these two, trustee Brooks and Jenkins Bell, can let us know sixteen checks were pulled, because there were funds and things that they weren't aware of, but y'all sitting there, you know, I don't even know if y'all open your package, but y'all vote out, and let everybody get paid, it could be most of clown on there, y'all would vote out. I don't understand. We, we need really seriously some cutout and a checking quarter, because y'all are going fishing, you're out too much, you're at week's desk, you sit there, I'm in the door now, and do nothing. Yes, stare at me, because I'm staring at y'all, I see you, you see me.
That's right.
Because I'm about my business, and I'm not gonna continue to watch this village go down. A carvana that's taken up all the land, really? And it's not even a real carvana. It's just a big block with a whole bunch of buildings, it's crazy. I was my company, to this day, we never had a grand opening, we don't know what they're doing there, have you been in there, Ms. Scott?
I have not been in.
Now, I know you have, because I know you'd be surprised at what you might find.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Ms. Williams. Phyllis Saunders, please.
Phyllis Saunders. I, it came to my attention that this building, certain units of this building, does not have sprinkler, operating sprinkler systems, and this building is all connected, so, to say one building, one section has a sprinkler, the other doesn't, makes absolutely no sense when you have a daycare in this building.
Yes.
That does not make sense to me. I don't understand how we had parking lot paved, and a facade put up, and all of this outside presentation made, and you don't have basics done. How did you sequence this work? A construction agent would have sequenced the work appropriately. I would like to know what was done with that money from, what was it, Colgate, Colfax, whatever that we earned a refund from.
Clorox.
Clorox, right. I would like an accounting of that, because it makes no sense to not have operating sprinklers in a building that you need in every month, and a building that has a daycare center. That is irresponsible. Irresponsible. Shame on you.
Sarah Lawson?
Pipe burst. The pipes burst, and they capped it off, and they never repaired it.
We can't hear you, trustee.
Sorry, the mayor did not know, I told him that, what was told to me was that the pipes had burst, and instead of them repairing them, they had capped them off and never repaired them, and if it was to be repaired, it would cost north of a quarter million. That's what was informed to me, and I was telling him, he didn't know, he said, he didn't know.
All right, ma'am. I would like to, to speak on a couple of things. So, I have had meetings with the police chief, I've also reached out today, we have a meeting as of today, because of a situation that was brought to my office, as it relates to the situation with the haunted house. Just to give you just some background, this, right here, this, this, on the end here, this business, the water business, they have absolutely no sprinkler system, so, let me say this, so that in itself is a half a million. However, my issue is dealing with the stuff that I can try to remediate right now, so I am working to get an estimate, we do have one estimate, but I need an updated estimate, it is approximately, it's on my desk, it's approximately a hundred and eighty-seven to a hundred and ninety thousand, it's a little under a hundred and ninety thousand, but I'm looking to get an updated, an updated estimate, so that we can move forward with getting that finished, and I know there are things that maybe weren't addressed prior, but I can only do what I can do right now, so that's something that I'm looking into, and I now am in the process of applying for the Clorox money. So, there were a couple of things that were brought up, that I did address with a few of the residents in the audience, and I did talk to trustee Jenkins, and I think some of the others, and I initially had had conversation with the mayor, as it relates to the ARPA funds, and the mayor expressed that he wanted to put together some type of program, amnesty program, so I'm looking into that, I don't want to hastily put it out, and I think I mentioned at the first board meeting, that I think it's in poor judgment, or on my part, to just roll out something without getting everything in place, as far as what that looks like, I know a couple of people said that they had suggestions in the audience, as to how they think that, you know, I should, should format the amnesty program, but I am in the process of putting together some type of program, really, for the residents, as it relates to that, so that's the first thing. But the second thing is, as far as sprinklers go, I'm looking into that, because I was unaware that there was areas of the piping that had bust, and this was years ago, and it just wasn't, you know, the way that they handled it maybe wasn't proper, so we're in the process of getting that together, and a couple of other things that I think need to be addressed here at the town center, while we still have the funding of Clorox. So, when I do put that together, and I submit it, I will address the audience and the community, and let them know what's in that package, and I will let you know the outcome of that, and I will be rolling out the amnesty program, but I just don't want to do it in haste, but it is coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yeah, wait a minute, Ms. Lawson, go ahead. So, just for the record, the sprinkler system has probably been inoperable for the last ten years, so there's nothing new about the sprinkler system.
To what?
It's gonna get, it's gonna get remedied now, so I beg to differ, anybody else, go back to white, tell the truth.
You gotta take care of this building, that is totally irresponsible.
Okay, Ms. Lawson, go to the microphone. Sometimes the facts are just kinda hard to bear, but those aren't the facts.
Good evening, mayor, board of trustees, village clerk, village employees, and residents.
Good evening.
My, my comments are falling right in line with the conversation, because I have a demand for accountability. I stand before you tonight to bring attention to concerns that have been brewing with the residents, as it relates to the Freedom of Information Act, and the Open Meetings Act. Firstly, I believe, as the attorney general believes, that an open, honest, and accountable government can be achieved only through the free and open exchange of information between government and the public. In Illinois, our most important transparency laws, the Freedom of Information Act and the Open Meetings Act, endeavor to open the workings of government to the public, shed light on government actions, and in the process, strengthen our democracy. When the time is right, always right, to do right. It is time for this mayor, and this board, to reimagine accountability as we, the residents of University Park, demand honest government. Yes, madam clerk, eight residents can't stop the tide, but we can try to save as many people as we can from the flood of corruption and bad government in University Park. Secondly, it is the public policy of this state, that public bodies exist to aid in the conduct of people's business, and that the people have a right to be informed as to the conduct of their business. Thirdly, and lastly, it is declared to be the public policy of the state of Illinois, that all persons are entitled to pool and complete information regarding the affairs of government, and the official acts and policies of those who represent them as public officials and public employees, consistent with the terms of this act. Such access is necessary to enable the people to fulfill their duties of discussing public issues fully and freely, making informed political judgments, and monitoring government to ensure that it is being conducted in the public interest. Unfortunately, master clerk seems to be only mastering, not completing the requested orders. This is an unfair practice of one who holds such a title as master. It is my hope that better consideration will be afforded the residents, that communication will happen, and that we will be talking one to the other, so that we may have good government. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Deborah J. Stroud.
Good evening, mayor, board, those present and those viewing. Since I was informed today that today is the last day of in-person registration for voting, I wanted to take the opportunity tonight to say thank you to all the families, the friends, the students, especially the students at Preet Moni, that contacted me to do in-person registration. I'm going to continue to convince myself that due to online and same-day registration is why the numbers keep dwindling, but again, I appreciate the opportunity of having been able to in-person register those to vote. I got more seventeen and eighteen-year-olds this time, so that, that does my heart really good. Thank you to anybody, we'll start back again December eighth.
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your positive comments. Mrs. Bill Jamorgan?
Hello, everybody. I agree strong heartedly with Ms. Lawson, Gina Williams, Phyllis Saunders, and everything that they said. I think with the sprinkler system business, because we had a meeting with the village manager, it comes up that the children couldn't have a Halloween party up here, because of the sprinkler system. And I didn't understand that, because here's what's happening, if they can't have a Halloween party, why are we here? How come we here? And mayor, you have parties all over the place, don't you? You get your fair share in. Why not think about the children, they're growing up, you grown, and almost gone. Let's let the children enjoy themselves. Let's give the parents something to smile at, as they see their little trick-or-treaters. Stop blocking. Stop doing things to stop this village from enjoying themselves. You enjoy yourself. We talking about the car shows, the different parties up there, private parties I may add, at the golf course, that's coming out of our pockets, not yours. Another thing I want to talk about, I believe it's under you that signs are being removed. Don't do that. You are saying that it's on the park sign, you got signs all up and down here, all up down through here, and for you to have the sign removed, and one of the neighbors, that guy, I don't care if it's an inch, or foot, or yard, into the park sign, it's okay, it's only temporary. That sign says a whole lot that we all want, and that is, say no to park districts.
Yes.
We don't want the park district, you're the only one that wants it, you and Bill Chaney. The two of you guys are seniors, go sit down somewhere, go sit, take them up there to the golf course, but leave our signs alone, let this village flourish. You're having an excellent time. Let us live.
Amen.
All right, that ends our public comments.
Mr. Mayor, quick comment. I just want to say that I was not invited to the meeting, but I heard of it. I just want to say that it disturbs me that we are at this point. We have residents that are trying to do the right thing. I also want to reach over to Mrs. Scott. I seen Ms. Scott at the library, just days after her father passed, and she was out there with us. I just want to give her the credit for handling, or trying to have a conversation to make right, of any complaint that comes forward, especially when it dealt with having a party here, and trying to follow up on things that should've been done a long time ago.
Amen.
I don't know, you know, this, this statement, sometime I listened to the numbers, when we started saying last administration, that's, I'll say my, I'll say my curse word for that one, but when we started saying last administration and all so forth, you know, I know I had one full term, and I'm on year number two, pushing into three. My thing is, is that each board is responsible for what happens at this town center.
That's right.
And we have to understand that if it's something that needs to be taken care of, it needs to be prioritized, and one thing I have to say is, that day, Ms. Scott assured me some things, and have seen things that she's trying to correct, but I understand the shoes that you're in, and I'm not gonna put you out there, but let me say this, one person, it's a hard fight when you one person, and you have an army that won't let you move forward. I know what it feel like. I always tell you, if you ever seen Matrix Part Two, with Neo fight five hundred Agent Smiths, I know what it feel like, when one person touches that next person, and they all turn to Agent Smith, and little Theo has to fight all of them, until he gets out of there. So, everybody, I understand your concern, Ms. Scott just got here, and I just want to say, in the times that she's going in, and the things of you all raising your voice, I do see some things moving forward, the will of government moves slow, but it's gonna take all of us to make sure it happen, and I just want to give credit to Ms. Scott for listening to those residents that day, because I, I would be upset too, like my colleague said that this Halloween party was supposed to happen, and it looked like she's gonna have to re- relocate. So, that's not good when you have a plan for kids, and you have put your time and effort into it, and now the kids, and the party, and the person who's in charge of it, has to do something different.
It's gonna be right here.
I give my time, ma'am.
All right.
Mayor, may I be recognized once?
Yeah, yes.
I want to take the time to really truly thank all the residents that came in to support the children, they're always here for the children. These residents are consistent with the children, they put all their personal to the side, and they support the children. I planned, I planned a haunted house, which I have done for the last two years, as, as scheduled for the children here in University Park. I had no idea that the sprinkler system was not working, I received an email from our fire chief, who should have been present tonight, to explain himself, and he's not. And the thing about this is, is that we need to look at the situation, and start to put our children first, and stop making it personal, and put the children first. There's a bias that all the residents see, when it comes to the baseball organization or other organizations that are not, that are not in line with who they feel they want to support, so this needs to stop. The children need to come first. Now, I don't know if the sprinkler system is gonna be completed by the thirty-first, I don't want to take a chance, and someone's child gets hurt, so we have to put the children's safety first, so it will be moved and relocated for safety reasons only.
Why are we in this building right now?
Thank you, trustee. You know, I do, I do have one question, trustee, why does everything have to be so separate, when there's already Halloween? Listen, I'm not gonna have a Halloween out from the audience, first of all, that's not gonna happen tonight, I'm talking to the trustee, that's the only person I'm speaking to.
Why does it have to be separate?
Yeah, when, when the village is doing one thing, and then you want to break off to something, we can be one big family, and I don't understand how it always has to be a divide, a division.
Why is it a division, when you actually have other events going on simultaneously in other communities? Why do we have to join the village with everything that they want to do, that they can't join us?
All right, thank you, we got the agenda, let's go to the agenda. Item five one A, there would be a presentation from memorandum of understanding between the village of University Park and CMAP, related to the RRO Resource Opportunity Grant.
I believe, I believe we had touched on this before, it wasn't signed, this is just a resource opportunity for I, but basically, this is a program that is free, it's sponsored by CMAP, this is something that Ms. Ernestine had done, did prior to me getting here, however, I'm familiar with this, because I did this in another community, this also gives you someone who will come in and assist with grant writing, someone who will help you organize and structure your project, as it relates to infrastructure and things of that nature, so I, it's a good resource, they just need the memorandum of understanding, so we can, so we can get this started.
Yeah, for the record, this is our second, second time around with CMAP, yeah.
Isn't this what we just got pretty talked about? So, just basically, you gotta sign a memo.
You never signed a memo, damn you, yeah.
So, there consists of nine, well, you're answering questions.
Yeah, yeah, what's, what's, what's the pleasure? Moving on, all right, all right, thanks very much. Item F five one B, Ms. Scott, presentation and discussion, Ozley Grant for Rico Farmer.
Um, so this is the Ozley Grant Program Resolution of Authorization. This is for the restoration of Regal Farm. This is, um, this is approximately six hundred and, I don't wanna have the exact number, six hundred and twenty-nine? Is that what it is? Um, it's a little under six hundred and fifty thousand. This was something that was started prior to me getting here. Um, so I'm not gonna take credit for this, but this is, uh, this is for the Ozley, for the Regal Farm.
Now, my question is, is that the, the six hundred and twenty-nine or thirty-five thousand, I can't?
Six, six thousand, six hundred plus.
Six hundred plus thousand. It is from a, a regional project fund that came from, it's a grant that is not matching. So, I'm trying to see is this Ozley grant, because the Ozley grant?
It's, it's, it's all wrapped up in Ozley.
No, no, because they're separate. And so, what I'm trying to understand is, are you gonna use the, the regional project fund grant to make up for the money of the matching funds that you need for the Ozley grant that would also assist with Pine Lake? So, I need to know that. Because I spoke to Senator Joyce today and he explained to me that the grant that he put forth is not matching. It's a full grant. But Ozley is not a full grant, it's a matching grant.
For Regal Farm, it's not a, it's not a, uh, it's not a matching for this, for the Ozley? Ozley is a matching for Pine Lake, definitely comes in the matching. The six twenty-nine is just like a set aside for, for, uh, Regal Farm?
Well, the regional project fund grant is what Senator Joyce was sending to University Park, not Ozley. No, it's a different grant. This is a different grant. Yes, so this particular grant is not matching. No. Okay, can you send us the documentation, please?
Yes, I will get all that documentation and send it.
Okay, thank you. Before we move to the agenda, I need to see it.
I was gonna just double check, cause I know. I knew, I, what I see is, um, a form, but that's all I'm seeing, just a form. Yeah, that, that's all that, yeah, so I just wanted to make sure, uh, is this what trustee? Trustee, is this what you have been working hard for? I know you have been, Ms., Ms. E.
This started, right, prior to this started, uh, when giving coven to us here. And also, uh, you know, Mrs. Trust informed us, this, this was from the last administration, in administration before that. Somebody dropped the ball and didn't, you know, finish the project. But when we came in, they picked it up. And Shirley and all of them worked really hard for the Ozley grant for Pine Lake. And I know that we tried to get one with Mrs. E, with Regal Farm, we had to, it was drama with that. And so, we got down to Springfield and got it, but we didn't qualify because our fiscal house wasn't in order, you know? We were not got a certified, now we are, so we needed some docs. So, what we're trying to find out, I want to see the document before I move it to the next agenda to send it to get the renovations.
So, I guess the question I have would need the clarification, is two grants, two of? Cause I know Ms. E spoke about a lot of grants and I knew trustee Jenkins was working on one. And she spoke of, um, so then this is the one with Shirley. I knew Shirley was working on some, right? Okay, help me with clarification.
There are two different grants. Ozley is a, is a fight to the Pine Lake project. This Ozley is also, you should have it in Dropbox, is for Regal, this is specifically for Regal Farm. You got that, they should have it in Dropbox. That's one part. This Ozley grant is specifically for Regal Farm and that's the dollar one.
Now, is this ambition, ambition, someone's own who's working on it?
No, 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 this, this, this is it. This is what, this is what trustee is working on. Pine Lake is something completely different, where there's a, a matching for Pine Lake. We once received that one before, but we, that got kicked out, we started over again, so now, yeah. No, no, this is, this is, it's, you got it in Dropbox, it's what, what's it, it's like the? See, see this one? Right here, I, I can, you know, project title, Regal Farm Restoration.
What is the submission date? I see forty-five days before Ms. Scott? Or is it, uh, we're not meeting any deadlines, are we?
No.
Okay, yeah, see, it was, uh?
So, just, so the suggestion? Two, is there two separations? This is solidified for this one, what you just saw on that document. The other one has to be applied, applied for, for Regal Farm and that's the one that's a matching grant. Like we had, like we previously had.
Okay, so I follow trustee, I go on this one.
Forty-five days, forty-five days, so. Yeah, yeah.
Mayor, ma'am, I recognize that.
Go ahead, trustee.
I would like also for a committee?
You still get your documentation, but we'll move it forward.
But while we're discussing this, I would need a committee set up, cause if this is a forty-five day, day thing, we need to have this people together that have been working on this project for years that want to implement some of their ideas and get things rolling. So, this is a good thing, I'm happy, ma'am, express this mission.
This is, this is probably gonna be, I think the funding date is twenty, June of twenty-three is when the funding date is for that. Yes, yeah.
Uh, I want to ask you all, when, this is the committee of the whole. So, instead of talking around the residents, when you get to an item, make sure that we understand what's going on. Can you do that, trustee Brooks?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Make sure that we understand what's going on and you're not talking over the residents' heads. That way, if we do have a question, we can ask our question and we can be a part of the conversation. We can be a part of, you know, uh, having something to say or participating in our government. But if you sit up there and just have the conversation amongst yourselves, you really leave us out of the conversation. So, make sure that we know what Ozley is, you know, don't talk over our heads.
Yeah, ma'am, let me also, just, uh, just one quick question too. This, the one you showed, would that be a matching grant?
The one in, the one in the Dropbox there?
Right.
Regal Farm Restoration? No.
The one that trustee was working on though, that's a matching grant?
No, no, wait a minute. This one in the document for Regal Farm is non-matching. Pine Lake, this one is a matching grant.
Okay, okay.
Open Spaces Land and Acquisition.
Okay, that's the match.
So, Ozley is the Open Space Land and Acquisition Program Development Program. It's essentially a program where public entities, and I've only worked with Ozley a few times, uh, cause usually from the attorney standpoint, I don't really have that much involvement. But it's a program in regards to, um, for acquiring and developing land for specific uses. You've obviously gotten approved for a use, which is great, um, it's, not everyone gets approved. I think you have a two-year, um, once there's approval, you have two years to, um, to do it, get it done. That's what Ozley is. Obviously, there's, um, um, you probably actually have owned the land already, so it's more the development of the land. But maybe there's some land that, cause you could also use Ozley to acquire land for purposes of development, so I don't know the specifics of this, I wasn't involved in this, um, this project. Obviously, your previous village manager had worked on this, so that's what Ozley does.
Also, ma'am, I would like to be in charge of this, this project. Cause I work.
Just from the start, we're the same thing.
I want to be involved in every aspect of this project.
At the initiation of this, it was you and trustee Franklin working together on that Regal Farm project, if I'm not mistaken. That's the way it was originally started out.
I don't remember that.
Okay, well, I.
I mean, honestly, that's.
We got, that's the way it was.
Well, I mean, we worked on, well, we were, we'll get it together.
No, no, no.
And I apologize, it says three years.
What I'm trying to do is get a commitment from you to make sure.
Oh, that's, we want the thing done. Absolutely, we all work together. My suggestion would be, is we contact our engineers, cause they put in a lot of groundwork for renderings and everything of that nature. Because, you know, sometimes you get, all right, we just start moving forward and start communicating with the purpose rights agency, what's going on with the renderings and everything else. Which has to be approved by the state.
Now, also, have you had any type of open workshop, uh, workshop about Regal Farm with the residents?
Not since the last time that we had been here, none.
So, we need to do that to make sure that we're on par and sync with our, with our taxpayers.
Uh, actually, we had a, a workshop a couple of weeks, about a month or so ago here. About a month or so ago, right here, about, yeah.
Alright, that was, but we, I remember that, I, but we need to make sure that our residents are. Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because they work extremely hard.
I have a question to, uh, trustee, uh, Jenkins?
Certainly, Mrs. Morgan.
This, uh, what's, what's, uh? Uh, this, uh, six twenty-nine, is that the money that you, uh, uh, Senator Joyce brought in?
Senator Joyce brought in an addition of six hundred and twenty, six hun, I think it's like six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, that's another grant. His, his is a regional project grant that, that's funded through the, through the.
So, what you're talking about is something different?
Yes, it's a separate grant, it's a separate grant. So, it's the Ozley grant when we first started, first.
Let me ask you, trustee, uh, can those two be put together? And go ahead on and fix Regal Farm?
I don't see, I don't see why it shouldn't.
Or should we just chisel and chisel and chisel away at it?
Well, well, you know, Senator Joyce.
I'm asking, I'm asking, uh, uh, trustee Jenkins?
Can the grants work simultaneously?
Because these kinds of things are going back and forth, I can't keep up.
I mean.
Yeah, we get, well, let's get the answer, a good answer for you is another.
I guess.
Morgan.
That part you'd have to get state approval for? Doesn't mean that you can't have a, you could have a grant working on a certain area at, at a location and another grant working on a different area. It doesn't have to be that they're combined. I'm, I'm not sure about this idea of like combining the grants, cause you're talking about different agencies. So, they're probably not going to allow that specifically. I'll defer to Ms. Scott on that, because she probably has more knowledge on that than me.
So, it does depend on the grant? Um, I will look into that. I'm not really sure of the grant that you're speaking of, trustee, so if you can give me the title of that grant, I should maybe the origin of the agency, the government agency that this, um, comes from, and I'll be able to let the audience, let you all know, as well as the board. Let me say this, this is, uh, this comes from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. Like I said, I did not specifically apply for this grant, but I do know that this typically has a fifty percent. It gives you, it covers fifty percent, but because this is considered a distressed community, it's a hundred percent. And I misspoke and I, I want to correct that, it's not six hundred and twenty-nine that was in my head because of the money that trustee Jenkins had mentioned from Joyce, it is actually six hundred thousand. It would be one point seven two five, I believe, if it was a land acquisition in conjunction with the renovation, but because we already own Regal Farms, the maximum amount we can receive is six hundred thousand.
Was the grant approved? Y'all still, y'all just say y'all plan for it?
So, this is what the application process is, and we will find out if it's approved, so we don't know yet.
The application process has not.
No, this is being sent in and then we should find out if we'll, if we'll be receiving it. If we do, whether or not we receive it or not, we will notify the, the committee.
But it's not approved?
Not yet, no.
I just want to make sure.
I believe so, but I don't want to, I want to confirm. Oh, it is, okay, that's fine. So, what sector? Is it from, it's from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, is that where it's coming from?
Yes, it is, okay.
So, at the end of the day, cause we know this question will come, if we're going out to go tonight by Ms. Millie, we can't do both. We can't do what we can ask and find out.
What I, what I'm saying to you is this. You are talking, your village manager checked on that. But you're talking about two different state agencies. So, I don't know if, that go, you know, that's what we used to call these things before they changed names, if they're gonna necessarily allow, you know, if you get the ID in our grant. For my purposes, you don't let that hold you up. If you get an ID in our grant, you use that for a purpose, and you get the DECO grant, you use that for its purpose.
And you only have, it's typically two years to use the funding, if you don't, you have to return it.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, because, um, I think that the sentiment that all the residents will have when it comes to the money in reference to Regal Farms is that we know it needs a lot of work and so we know it's not gonna be cheap. I guess that would be a reasonable question that anybody would ask if we're gonna get one point one million compared to six hundred thousand. No, that, that was just my point, that the more, the more the better, the better to reach the plan that, that trustee was, was speaking about, about the restoration of the farm.
Alright, ma'am.
One more question. Uh, Ms. Scott, from speaking with Senator Joyce, um, maybe a month ago, he assured me that the grant had went through appropriations, I guess, through the state and it was getting ready to be funded within the next ninety days. So, have you heard anything from them?
I have not. So, I don't know if that's a line item in their budget, what, because you will see that sometimes. But like I said, trustee, if you can forward me the title of the grant, I'll do my research.
And then, okay, and we'll move in here, because if we're applying and we have not received the Ozley grant, doesn't the Ozley grant require for our fiscal house to be in order and our audits to be in order? So, if our audits are not, have not been completed, that may put us in a position where we are not qualified for this Ozley grant as well again this time. So, are they complete?
Yes, so. So, we are in the process of completing the twenty-twenty, it should be done within the next couple of weeks. Um, and we are currently, that is considered, you know, we explained to them that we're working on our, our, uh, we're working with the auditors to make sure that we can get that done. But we are eligible technically for any of these grants. Okay, we are, okay, well.
I got one more question about these grants and things. Uh, trustee, can you please tell me, or maybe, uh, uh, Mr. Mayor, can you tell me? Now, trustee, uh, Jenkins has always had an interest. Ever since she's been on board, she's always had an interest in Regal Farm. Why are you saying anything about trustee Franklin or anybody else having an interest in Regal Farm when that has not happened?
Cause there was a joint project together when we first got elected.
Is that true, trustee?
No, no.
Okay, that's obvious.
Okay, for you, is that, is that true?
I ain't gonna give it. So, that's one thing I'm. Trustee Franklin, are you aware of that, um?
I am aware of that conversation.
Conversation, or did you ever work with, uh, trustee Franklin?
We never had any funding, any, any teeth to, to begin working on anything, but the initial conversation is that, is that once we began to get the grant funding, that it would be a project that myself and trustee Jenkins, because of our natural, uh, already interest in things that we do with the kids in the community.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna be totally honest. You know, we, me and, uh, and Coach Toot, always calling trustee Tutu. He, uh, we were to work together in the interest of the children, yes, in the village. But when it comes down to Regal Farm, it has been my baby and I will.
And see him.
And my thing is, is this. I have worked extremely hard, I worked to bring Will County out for its first cleanup, which Patrick Joyce came out and cleaned Regal Farm with everyone else from Will County. And I have worked tirelessly to get funding for Regal Farm and from Will County for working different campaigns. People know this is what I've done for many years, this is not something I just started. This is something I've been doing for years.
Continuously.
And so, um, when the funding does come, come aboard, I, that's why I'm being very serious when it comes down to a committee being formed for all of the rest of the residents that have been doing back when you worked, to make sure and ensure that Regal Farm is brought back to its, its grandeur. So, I'm looking at this and, you know, from Mrs. Dealworth to Robin, uh, Walker and trustee, um, Brooks and H&R Block and all of these different people that have been hands-on on Regal Farm, I'm not gonna take anything from them and I won't have anything taken from me when it comes down to Regal Farm.
Alright, so it's moving on. Next item, this item, we're gonna move forward, Madam clerk. Item five one C, a resolution of a program authorized to rename the special events fund to community development projects funds. Trustee, uh, who asked to ask this? Trustee Jenkins? Well, item five one C, you asked us to be tabled and have this. What was it that you was looking?
We can't hear you, I apologize. We can't hear you. I apologize.
I didn't hear all of it.
Yes, sometimes let us have our dialogue. We're not trying to overtalk anyone. Mrs. Morgan, please.
You're right. If you can't hear, just say I can't hear.
Just say, just say you can't hear. Just do your voice to ears or something. We'll speak up louder.
Uh, I spoke with the village manager in great detail what I wanted to, wanted to receive from her in reference to this. It has, I have not received it all. I told her how I wanted, because there was a little bit of miscommunication on what they thought that I wanted to receive and what they sent me, which was a hundred and what, how many pages?
A hundred plus.
No, three hundred pages. It was a lot. It was, I think it was over three hundred. Over three hundred pages of, of bills and that's not what I had. So I, I talked to the village manager. She's working on it. She's working on it. Um, you know, she's lost her dad. So, you know, she's working extremely hard on it and I have got some of the information. But I want to wait before this moves to the agenda if that would be the pleasure of the board.
Let, let, let's have it. Trustee, shit.
I wasn't here so I was so, what is it you were asking for?
I asked for, I asked for, um, what, I asked for the checks for the Mo's Office of Special, I mean, I guess it's Mo's Special Events Fund. I asked for all of the donors that were given. I still have not received the donors they had from the back-to-school function as well as all the canceled checks from the donors. I did not, that's what I wanted and they sent me five hundred pages of microbills and different things like that. That's what's in it. It's a lot. It's a lot. So the thing about this is, is that what we're going to do is wait. I need the information and then we'll proceed from there.
So this is the resolution, this is to rename the special events fund to community development projects fund. How pressing is that, Madam Clerk?
I'd like to get it done just simply because the, the naming is misleading as I had stated before, um, in the meeting, but I will give you that information. Um, so this is the thing. So trustee, if you can, I'm going to make an arrangement with you and, uh, Bolden, Mr. Bolden, so that we can, um, I mean, Bolton, Daryl, Bolton, so that we can, uh, get your iPad fixed because the, the problem was that, I guess there was some issue utilizing the Dropbox because we did change the, the system over. So, um, Clerk D sent all of the checks that normally go in the Dropbox, but there's a lot of checks and it literally came through, I think, in the course of three emails. So it's a lot of information to go over, but I'll sift through it. But I did make copies of the checks for you in my office. Like I said, it's, it's several hundreds.
Okay, one question.
Right, trustee. Yeah, I'm gonna take one from the audience and keep moving.
Yeah, no, let me ask, was, no, I was asking trustee Jenkins, was the nine court bills, was that paid out of this event, special event?
No, so all of the checks were all the checks that go on the bill run.
Oh, okay. So that was that other issue you had too. Okay. Um, I guess the question I have is that, um, I received my, uh, bank account statements. How would we handle, um, because I know David Savier stood up here and spoke about,
Yep.
Uh, uh, when it comes to, I guess, reconciling the bills or statements or books. One thing I found that definitely stuck out is that fifty-four thousand Miss E took out of there. That wasn't a building permit. That was taken out of that account as well as three hundred some odd thousand for something else, two hundred something thousand, I guess, I don't know if it was to cover these payrolls. My question is a trustee considering, how would that come, how would we ever handle that if we can help you with that, Miss Scott? Because I clearly knew them numbers when I seen the fifty-four thousand that she took out on December the seventh.
So, not going back to that because I'm not, I wasn't here, so I don't want to speak to the details of that. But I would tell you that when I looked at certain things, I didn't go back two years until you had requested it, um, but there were funds that should not have been put together. So when the money's removed, that may have been from permit fees that were put in that account, um, you also had MFT funds, so that needed to be segregated. And when, in doing that, first of all, it's supposed to be segregated, but in doing that, then you're able to see.
What's, where, where everything though?
Exactly.
Okay.
So that was my, uh, that was my concern when I came. The other thing was that this name is misleading because when I looked in there, it wasn't what it says, which makes you think that this is all some kind of special events fund, but it wasn't. And the money was just not put properly in this, you know, the accounts as it should, um, the MFT funds have been segregated and, and whatnot. So we're in the process of making sure everything is how it's supposed to be. I did speak with Lauren, the accountant, and she is working on that. By the way, I think she may have had it today. She's supposed to have.
Well, she's probably had it.
She might have had it today. I know she was having labor pain, so it's either right now or it's about to happen. Um, but I did send her an email. We did talk about it and she is doing that.
Okay, because that, that is, that's one of my concerns because for almost two, two, almost three years, uh, the village, former village manager, um, she gave this board and the residents all type of excuses of where the money came from and just so hap- well, yeah, she lied, basically. She got caught. And in something like that, um, one thing for sure, I don't have to worry about it getting lost because you're not going to be able to run from that. But I'm just kind of curious how do we handle that and everything else that I've seen that she removed or whatever she tried to cover? Because at the end of the day, she's responsible for everything that was moved in and out of that account, not Ms. Kelly. This very clear, let me make that very clear. When we took over in twenty seventeen, when the mayor and them was no longer trustees, it was understood that the village manager gives the thumbs up, thumbs down of the finances and all Ms. Kelly's job is to do is cut the checks. And she's pretty much aware of what goes on and, and when it starts turning to where code red needs to be spoke about, she usually calls it. And in this situation, Miss E, Miss Beth Fokel, I want to make sure that that fifty-four thousand she took out of there, we make sure there's a special note to that because that's what David Savier was talking about.
So I guess the question I have for the board and the community is changing the name, that's not going to stop the process for you getting the, the checks. I'm, I'm just curious. The change of the name, I'm just curious because I want the, the, the community's asking, that's why I'm.
I, I can, I can help with that though because we had a special, the committee was called Human Services Special Events Committee. In twenty nineteen, it was changed to the Mayor's Office of Special Events. So just not too long ago, you know, here it is, we're looking for, what was it, the grant? We were looking for a grant or we're trying to find out where's the money at. Uh, right. And here we come finding out this is a bank account named a special event. And so to be honest, the first thing you think of is Mayor Rudes because he changed the name. Now, the other part is, although it was denied, Mr. Miller, last board meeting when Ms. Millie brought it up, I seen it with my own eyes. It was twenty thousand dollars of some type of receipt or statement that was flown out there saying it's from the Mayor's Office of Special Events.
And I still have a conscience though.
Okay, see, they have it. I didn't have it. And that's one of those things that is, is transparency, that's why it's so important. Because even though it's not, it's not him, but then Miss E come to find out, she had something to do with it from what I'm, my little investigation. She had something to do with it, but then she took it upon herself not to listen to the advisement she got. And someone told her, "Miss E, don't do it." That should give you a hint when I said, "Miss E, don't do it." Miss E did it anyway. And you have all this money coming out of this one bank account and they feel that, you know, people want to, they call it basically, it got to the point in the community, they call it the Mayor's personal slush fund. So this is, this is why it's important. So once again, we have a situation where Miss Scott is trying to correct something that should have never happened in the first place, three years ago.
And, and, and I'm fine with the.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's about the name because, um.
You cannot change the name. It will be illegal.
That's, that's absolutely not true. That's absolutely not true.
Dave Savier said, "I wouldn't do it," but Dave Savier stood here.
Are you my attorney?
And told her, "If you change the name, you will go to jail."
No, the board can change. The board has the authorization to change the fund name. Whoever's told you that was wrong, I will take. I don't know David Savier. No. Okay, so, okay, that's, that's incorrect. The board can change the name. There's no doubt about it. My, my simple question was, if Miss Scott is doing the work, is changing the name going to affect that?
Yes.
But the, the board makes the decision, but let me assure you, that statement that you can't do that is incorrect. That's absolutely incorrect. So, and you don't have to believe me and I don't really don't care if you believe me or not. I'm just here to tell you the truth. That part is the truth. But listen, if the board doesn't want to change the name, they don't want to change the name. I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure I'm trying. You guys have asked, you know, in theory, and I'm going to say this because I've said this before, this is a public meeting, not a meeting of the public and there's a difference, but you guys do run it as a meeting of the public, so you guys are having public input. A lot of villages and a lot of other places where at the, the committee of the whole, you, the public comment is your part to participate. That's great that they're allowing you to do this. The only reason I ask that is because I know you guys want to have that information, so I wanted to help you get more informed. But just, that's, that, that comment that you can't do it and it's illegal is incorrect.
You know what's really scary? What's really scary is now.
Mrs., Mrs. Morgan, please. Mrs. Morgan. Uh, don't, Mrs. Covington, Mrs. Morgan. Mrs. Morgan, I'm asking you to stop talking out loud. Mrs., Mrs. Covington?
Yes, um, purpose of changing, um, please don't take her out. Don't do this right inside.
All right, let's not be disruptive then. We're not going to be disruptive. We're not playing that nonsense.
Now, my question is, if you want to change it, but, okay, the original name, huh, what it was, Human Service Special Events Committee, okay, that was a purpose. All right, now you get the Mo's thing. Now you're doing this. Now, the thing of attorney that I will address and challenge you with, how was the definition, the purpose of the organization? Okay, special events was for special events. Now you're moving into a whole different name with a total different, uh, purpose. To me, when you say project development, that is not special events whatsoever.
I'm going to allocate the funds. Second of all.
Michael, wait, 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 you all. Listen, let me talk, not you. It's, it's not, it's not, uh, this name that you just said, the Mo's stands for Mayor's Office of Special Events. All right, just like it was the Human Services and other special events. This other name that you're talking about is in no relation to either one of those things.
Okay, so, but it says here you're changing.
We're, we're going to take it because, because it had, it had the name of special events and there were people thinking that there was something, uh, a personal accounting, but it isn't. So we're going to change it, that's for clarity, on the advice of the accountant, to give it a different name, all the way.
And let me say this, this is why we're having this confusion because of the name. This is not the Mayor's Office of Special Events. Let me repeat that. This is, this is the, there's a difference. And I think everyone keeps hearing the word special events and hanging on to that. It's the Mayor's Office of Special Events. It's totally separate from special events fund. It's misleading. And, and I did not think it was a good choice because it, it makes it sound like something it's not. And it could be, what if it was MFT special funds? So there's, there's money in there that shouldn't be commingled. It's being separated. Rather or not you name it the Green Giant, the Black Panther, the fact of the matter is it doesn't change the composition of the money. It doesn't change what's in there, but it's to cut down on this confusion. And that's the reason why I spoke to the accountant and he said that's, that it needs to be changed for clarity.
Okay, Mayor, as he was saying, Mayor, um, Rudes, my thing is, that's absolutely fine. Thank you for responding. However, again, I'm not understanding the purpose. When you have a name of something, a group, an organization, underneath it tells you describes what that group is, and now this, the previous village manager was very abrupt and rude when we asked for the fact we want to see the balance sheet. We asked, "Where's the money going?" But we, she, she stopped having a meeting. She, she just dismissed us. We wanted to know how much money's in the account. What are you doing with the funds, this and that. So now, again, we're back with this. I'm, I understand what you're saying, Scott. It is a name, however, there's a functionality under the name. What's the purpose of this organization? Why are you changing from special event fund? The funds that you're saying that comes to a special event is not going to, the funds are going to be moved to the community development project fund? That's all? Or how are we saying?
No, I want that account used for just what the name is going to be. I don't think that it should be mingled with a whole bunch of other stuff and I want that to be just for that. The other money, I want ARPA put in its own fund, in its own account. I want, I want MFT to be put in its own fund. That is what I'm trying to say. So this is going to be specifically for example, perfect example. Okay, let's go to the name, Community Development Project. Regal Farm. That's Community Development Project. So when we have to put money aside for that, guess what? That's where I want it to go. Hiccup. That's where that's going to go. It's going to be exactly what the name says, which is Community Development Project. That's only what I want that account to be used for.
And this fund, Miss Scott, totally understandable, okay? However, when MFT funds has a purpose, MFT's funds supposed to be motor, fuel, taxes, okay? It's supposed to use just for that and that only. We understand that. We've all been to finance meetings. We understand my limits for these things. We're just trying to understand that here it's going to be changed. What is the functionalities? Is it going to be the same? You can't, okay.
The functionality of the committee, because the functionality of the committee stays the same. It's to provide the special events on behalf of the residents of the village. That, that's going, that maintains the same. Nothing changes in principle but the name, to make sure it has its own identity as Miss Scott stated, that certain funds will be there.
Miss Scott just said it's changed.
Yeah, my.
So at the end of the day, at the end of the day.
Wait, wait, wait. Let, let the trustee go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah, at the end of the day, the former village manager messed up. She should not have put that money, all that money into one account. And then on top of it, like I said, of that account, there's a situation where bonuses were passed out. That don't look good. And so it's a situation where here it is, when it comes to doing, when we have to sort out where things belong, you have somebody coming in from that who was not here that's trying to separate and, and put things in the right place. Also, let me also make a statement, uh, that's, 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 I hear this out there, this need to be properly put. The Village University Park didn't have seventy-seven accounts. They had sub-accounts. That's what we should have done when it came to certain accounts being open. You put them, you open that, that, what was, I can't think. It wasn't the bank we're at now. It was the, the previous bank, might have been the previous two banks.
We had seventy-seven bank accounts.
But, but there was a reason. It wasn't nobody was opening the account and the account, money being taken out the account, what we were, we were negligent. And when it was time to close them accounts, we didn't close it. That's what I discovered four weeks ago. That was the truth, right? We never closed it. So it wasn't, yeah, it wasn't that we had seventy-seven bank accounts and people were out buying brand new houses. No, what it was is that we weren't doing our job. So in a sense, I can understand Miss E saying, "I don't want all these counts because it's already out there. We got seventy-seven bank accounts." But I think in a situation like this, if the money, if, if, if Miss Scott is supposed to put, like the MFT belongs in its account. To my understanding, someone meant, who was the Ozley? Ozley Grant, was that the one? Which, which grant was the federal grant? Anyway, though, that grant, to my understanding, is supposed to be in its own account. ARPA, right, supposed to be in its own account. And so that was, that's, so I understand what Miss Scott is trying to do. I think at the end of the day, the previous village manager messed up and created a mess. Now, when she created a mess, but then it didn't help any that she did something with some money. And then also the name of the Mo's account, whatever it is, was out there and that is not the same or whatever, the twenty thousand, because it's obvious, it's two different separate things. From what I seen, the twenty thousand and two million is two different things. Right, so that's it.
All right, Mrs. Lawson. And we're going to, we're going to try to cut these, and try to move our agenda on. Go ahead, Mrs. Lawson.
One of the things that Mr. Xavier was saying also is that, um, when we have an audit, when you change the name, and we have an audit, that it's gonna be difficult for them to find what was there.
No, that's incorrect. Um, I work with governmental auditors all the time for a bunch of different types of municipal clients. Villages, districts change the name of funds all the time, and they're able to work through that. Quite honestly, if your auditor isn't unable to do that, then that's a problem. But that's, and I don't mean that as an insult, and I don't mean to be flippant, so I apologize if it sounds that way.
Yeah, it did sound a little flippant.
Okay, and that's why I apologize to you. But, um, if your auditor isn't able to do that, then that is a problem. That is something that occurs all of the time. It may be more difficult for someone from the outside looking in and be like, oh, this, the prior year this was that and this. But actually, the audit will have a statement that'll, like I said, tell you about the different name changes, because they give you kind of a M and A. They call it, there's different in regards to it. So the auditor that you have, that would be a problem. Um, they'll actually, if it's approved, they'll have the resolution, so they'll know what it's from. That for sure would not be something that would pose a problem for the auditor who's doing your audit.
Miss Dale, that'd be the last one from the public on this one. Go ahead.
Okay, so, just to bring up, this village has been commingling funds for years.
Exactly.
So it wasn't, this ain't the first time funds have been commingled. Also, the problem is, is that the account has discrepancies, and we have concerns because money has been taken out of the account the improper way. So, like, just changing the name, it kind of loses that information. And as you, like, the attorney, you said that, okay, yeah, the audit can get that information. They will put it in there. Only if they get the information, they can do it. But I've seen, and we've seen on the budget, where line items that used to be there are not there anymore. So there's no way to track it if they don't get the information. So I feel that the account should be, a new account should be created. Like, Miss Scott, Manager Scott, you were stating that she's gonna create an account for the ARPA funds. You're gonna put the MFT in the right fund, like it's supposed to. The other money's gonna go into their extra other account. So why not create an account, a brand-new account that says, Community Development Project Funds? And then put the stuff there, and leave that account the way it is, and just create a brand-new account with that title.
Thank you, thank you for your comment, Miss Dale.
I had this thought.
No other questions? No, ma'am.
No point, we're taking it. So are we gonna move forward? Are we gonna move it forward? Trustee Brooks, what's your opinion?
That's what she does. This is her special.
This is the company. Move it forward.
Move it forward.
All right, move it forward. All right, very good. Uh, item five-one-D. Discussion Resolution Designating the Village Manager as TIP Administrator. Go ahead, my friend.
I don't know what to say. I think it's kind of self-explanatory. I believe, um, the former village manager was, uh, was dealing with the TIP accounts. Um, I am not, I think it was asked by some of the people in the audience if I was gonna be asking for any additional money to manage the tips. And the answer, please, excuse me, the answer is no.
Right.
No, no.
No what?
I am not, so that's why.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Trustee, you got questions?
Yes, um, uh, the only question I have, actually, that's good to read my mind, I got a question. Miss Ernestine Beckfokel, um, or whatever, I tried to receive a document where she tried to put conditions on what she wanted to do. Does that void that? I didn't get a chance to give it with Madam Clerk. She doesn't know either about this specific demand, I guess, within some documents that Miss Beckfokel wanted to be considered the TIP Administrator, as well as have her job and some other things.
As far as I'm concerned, if you approve this, that will change that. Without having seen this document that you were presented, you know, it's hard for me to answer that because I don't know what she presented to you. But by you making it clear that the current village manager will be the TIP Administrator, any document, you know, proceeding forward.
So it was within her resignation letter, and when I went to her about it, maybe two weeks later, I visited her office and I asked her, you know, did you ask her, did you request these things? And what I seen.
Yeah.
And she said that she had gave it over to either the Mayor's Office or Miss Scott. And I doubted Miss Scott.
She probably wasn't the mayor at that point, when it was first happened.
No, that's why I did not believe. Because when she did it, I think Miss Scott came in on a Tuesday. Uh, I think Miss Beckfokel's statement was that it was given on that Friday. But that was impossible because she didn't get here until Tuesday.
Yeah, I guess from my standpoint, the short answer to your question is if you approve this, Miss Scott will be your TIP Administrator.
Okay.
Yeah, or the designated, but, you know, but essentially her.
What would be the difference? He just said designated and then.
Well, I think the rest, the ordinance, uh, yeah, the resolution, I'm sorry.
That's what it says, the resolution.
And the resolution.
Yeah, the resolution.
Okay.
Yeah, what it says is, I'll read section two of it. It says.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Section two of the resolution you received is, "The village manager shall receive no additional compensation for serving in a capacity as TIP Administrator. Should the village manager determine in his her service discretion that she is unable to perform the duties and responsibilities required in, the village manager may appoint an individual to serve in said capacity. Any compensation shall be determined and approved by the village board." So if she said, okay, I'm gonna designate it to whoever.
Ex-employee.
Ex, or, you know, or even maybe your current employee.
Right.
Before that employee gets paid anything in to serve in that capacity, the board asks to approve it.
Right.
Where we should discuss it in the committee of the whole first.
Yes, former legislative.
There's a lot of things.
Right. So, um, so I just wanted to make sure. The only reason why too, um, Miss Beckfokel made a complaint that she had not been paid, that's why I brought that up last board meeting. So, is that gonna leave an issue with this board? Or is that something, if she decided to leave tomorrow with this animal and then?
I would want to see something showing work done, okay?
I agree. Because she said, right, because she said she had not been, she told, she put it for the record she had not been paid for two months, so.
What, did she do any work as TIP Administrator for two months? I mean, there's a lot of things there, so like, there's. Look, and I'm not, I think we know how my opinion was on that person, so I'm not gonna go there.
Right, right, right.
But what I'm saying to you is like, okay, she says she's done work, then we'll see. She'll present the documents to the village manager, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm fine with that. I just wanted to clarify the case because of the complaint.
Yes.
That I got, that she had with the piece of paper, Madam Clerk, yeah.
I did, I do remember what you're talking about. I tell you, these were two separate, one was from her. We can't hear you. We can't hear you. I'm sorry. One was from Miss E to the board with what she would like, what she would transition from village manager to economic. But.
Okay, that's a big point. Okay, pardon me. That's a big point.
The other was what Miss Scott had given her as, as a economic. No, I had a question.
Okay.
Though, when you mentioned that to me earlier, I've been trying to think about this too.
Yeah, I just.
I did see both of those. There were two separate, one from her and one from the village manager.
Okay, yeah, and I just want to say, first of all, I'm not in objection to Miss Scott being TIP Administrator. I just wanted to say that the complaint had came from the former village manager saying that she had agreed to this. I know she's not here tonight, and I didn't, you know.
But to tell the truth, Trustee Brooks, you guys never discussed that, did you, Rick?
We did. You're absolutely a skilled person. We didn't complain about this.
Oh, we left, yeah, we left. Yeah, we left.
So we gotta move this.
Yeah, no, I'm fine. I don't have a problem with Miss Scott. Um, yeah, Mary, I give my time to.
Move it forward.
Yeah.
Move it forward.
Now, now, hold on, I have a question.
All right, move it forward. One second.
Now, I have a question.
One second, one second.
But I don't want it to be moved.
No, one second.
The board gets to decide what they're gonna do, even if you want to make a comment. So you gotta let the board do that.
Yes.
And that's where I talk my comment about.
But it's in regards to the.
Okay, that's the second thing. I ask y'all not to holler at Miss Dale. All right, I'm gonna address Miss Wayne. She had her hand up.
She had her hand.
Yes, all right, I tell you what, we're gonna continue to move that forward. Miss Wayne did have her hand up for a second.
She did, I'm sure.
So I acknowledge her, but she want to say something, Miss Wayne.
Oh, wow.
I wanted to know, the village manager, why did y'all keep her getting such a bad job as being the village manager? How did you get the other job? Were you qualified?
Okay, thank you. Miss Dale, work.
Okay, so the question is, is that you all have a resolution out there, where you already have a resolution that you passed in twenty nineteen. Why aren't you all amending the resolution?
That's a process you can do. I don't, that's a fair process. I'm not, you know, I don't.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, okay, that's a fair process. Quite honestly, um, whether you put the word amendment in there, as long as it indicates, you know, the change, then I think it's okay. But that's a fair point. A lot of times you do see that, and sometimes you don't.
Right, it's just resolutions out there. It was one pass, it was one pass in twenty nineteen, the exact same thing, but it had been where she got paid. All you're saying is not that you're not gonna get paid anymore. The village manager is a TIP administrator.
And you're gonna, pardon her, do it.
So it should just be amended.
Yeah, and just so you're aware, what this resolution has, it does have the conflicts clause, and it says, "All resolutions, parts of resolution and or board actions in conflict here with or hereby appealed to the extent of such conflict." So this would take care of that, but that is a fair comment. I didn't draft this one, um, another, probably not one of the other attorneys in the firm did. But yeah, I have seen that before as well. But, you know, when you see that language there, it takes care of that as well. So, fair comment.
All right. All right, okay, five-one-E. "A discussion and order to approve a special use to operate a solar farm located two thirty-three oh one South Central Avenue. Questions regarding the solar farm, and just for the record, this has been moved on by the planning commission and approved by the planning commission to move forward." And if you want a brief comment, anybody have any questions, first of all, regarding the solar farm?
Um, the solar farm is.
Oh, solar.
Sorry.
The location is, I'm trying to.
Okay, so this is the solar farm that's gonna be powering right century steel and wire. I'm saying right next to it.
Now, it is homes over there in Richmond Park. And you all had a meeting with the Richmond Park, um, Greenview Residents Homeowners Association. And my thing is, is this, have you all done a feasibility study on how that is going to affect those people on that side? And what is, and ask them, is this what they want? Because they live in a project their own. So they need to know, have you talked to them, what they've seen?
Well, I tell you what, the guy from the solar farmers here, but the conversations that we had with Greenfield was prior, which is across the street, Richmond Park, was about regarding the trash and everything and the traffic from Amazon coming up. It had nothing to do with any of our projects. Those fields are not gonna continue to sit empty. And, uh, you want to come up with any other thing to say about the solar farm? He's here to answer any questions regarding the solar farm.
Oh, I can't help out. Let me, let me, let me kind of, if my understanding, maybe the voters about this are not. Okay, so, currently, my understanding, in the industrial park, um, there is actually a solar farm there. Okay, and what occurred was that, um, a prior village manager, not Miss Beckfokel, actually approved the placement of that solar farm there, but it actually did not come before the Board of Trustees. It did not come before the village board at all. So what, um, the attorney who does the planning and commission and works with them, when this application process came about, he's like, wait a minute, we need to amend the code to even allow it to be in there. So that was the point. You don't currently have this in here. That's the point of that, because it was, and me and that village manager, we had some, me and him disagreed on some of his powers as village manager, but he went ahead and he signed the letter, so you have one there right now. The idea was that, let's actually put in a, in your code, so that there's actually some process, so that someone just can't do whatever they want to do. That's, that's, that's part A. And then, part A is actually allowing the special use for a US solar to do it. So then, just so you guys are aware of the history from, I don't think that's, it's funny, but, you know, the history of it was that there, um, the prior village, a couple of prior village managers ago submitted a letter allowing it without you actually having any zoning language to that effect. So that's what this is about.
You said this is a reference to language?
You didn't have anything in the code for a solar farm. So this is the idea of adding that, allowing you to have, you already have one there. So really, there should be something in your code in regards to solar farms. So this is trying to put some teeth so that essentially, one, there's a process to becoming, getting a solar farm in there. Two, also, it makes it clear that, you know, not that Miss Scott would do that, but that they just, that village manager who's no longer in the state would go ahead and just do what they wanted to do.
I thought he was back, but this says, presented, yeah, presented for your discussion and your approval to move forward, is an ordinance approving a special use to operate a solar farm at the property located at two-two, at two-three-three oh one South Central.
Right.
That's why, Trustee, that's why the special use is for the planning commission. That's what they went to the planning commission for, to apply for a special use permit.
So is this what I'm looking at next to the steel company?
Yeah.
Okay. So I guess the other question is, have you spoke with Greenview Association yet about this?
I don't know.
No, there was no need to speak to them.
Well, I'm gonna tell you why. I think it's, those people are pissed. I talked to the president today. And I understand them because, once again, I talked to someone, um, who lives over there, and you correct, the paper and so forth is an issue. And this is nothing against the solar farm people, so you just hold out for a moment because this is not directed towards you. I know what we did over at TIP seven, once again. It seemed like every inch we can, we just gonna give away TIP seven. So now, here we go. For a solo, solar farm over there, the purpose of TIP seven, number one, is so that we can construct business because they can pay more taxes. Here we are, we throwing up a farm. On top of it, where a farm is not gonna generate more money if it's a building. We all want green in University Park. We all want it. But once again, just like Terraco Group, well, this is the second company that at least came up here. But I was expecting tonight to see Mr. Good,[1710.61] But I was expecting tonight to see Mr. Good, because this permit says Venture One Real Estate. Even though it says Cam &amp; University Park LLC, that wouldn't have so happened to be you all, would it? See, only the property owners, Cam &amp; University Park LLC. The issue I have, once again, is that this is TIP seven. And then here we are, we want to say about the solar farmers over there, whatever John paid approved, it had to be south, if I'm not mistaken, they put a solar farm south, no, it's that south, south of University Parkway. As you come off the expressway, you should see it off to your right. This is sitting right next to the steel company. So not only do we continue to disregard the people over there in Richmond Park, the traffic and so forth, I mean, we don't even have a plan. We just do things. And it irritates me for the fact that every inch, every inch of this place is gone. I don't understand why Mark Good could come up here. Probably because he knows it's 170, 79 days before election day, and he don't want to come up here, because we got records of him giving $8,000. That's what I'm pissed off about, and it's next to the same plan, that 45 days before it was voted on, somebody got paid. So TIP seven, once again, something is going away. Guess it's gonna take a lot of money. I yield my time.
All right, preach. Talk about folks doing what they want to do.
Trustee Jenkins?
And what, who is that?
Well, if you, my, good governance is not only needed in University Park. Neighborly governance and, and a governmental relationship is needed as well.
Yes, yes.
And so the thing that I'm, the thing that I'm looking at is, is houses over there, and it's more than 10, it's more than 20, it's more than 30. So my thing is, is that we need to reach out to those neighbors and let them know, how would we like it, do you want them to build it across the street? I don't want one, no thank you. So allow them to have some input on making fencing or something they may want to see over there, at least reach out. That's making bad blood between mayors and communities.
Well, trustee, you know, this, this was ran in the newspaper, it was running the ad, it was a public notice. Anybody had the opportunity to see it, they knew that there was gonna be further development going on.
What did you tell them when you had them here and you were?
Well, yeah, because actually, we all, no, 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 listen, actually, we all talked about this when we were going through Century Steel and Wyer on, on the future projections of it. It's in the minutes, it's in the record, this was all a part of Century Steel and Wyer, how it will be powered.
So how is this gonna benefit the residents in University Park?
Well, it's gonna be built.
Excuse me, sir.
Sir.
Okay.
How is this benefiting?
So.
How is this going to be benefiting?
The question is, um, how, how, how is this gonna benefit the residents of University Park?
Uh, so we'll be taxpayers of the region then, um, we're also sublettered to Ryerson, so Ryerson will be paying taxpayer tax on, on the land. Um, we're, we're a sublet to Ryerson, which is leasing the land from Cam &amp;.
Which is Venture One.
Yes, ma'am, I believe so.
So the development for Ryerson, so Venture One is the building. And so his hand is in TIP seven. So it's a no for me.
Have the other trustees done any homework?
Right.
That would be my question. Please open your mouth.
Again, again, this was approved by the planning commission to move forward.
Because people complain that they can't hear, please, I'm just asking people to be respectful, and if you can't be, I will ask that you be removed.
We're not being respected.
I am respecting you, and I'm, I'm, I'm asking you to please respect everyone in the room, that's all, everyone in the room, thank you.
All right, so, I'm good, maybe we can move this forward?
No.
No. Could I ask a question?
What's the question? Let me, let me, I'm gonna go into the board and have to follow. Trustee Brooks? Okay, you want to give a presentation? Yeah, okay, sure, go ahead.
Um, would you like me to just present on the, the basis of the project?
Sure.
So the basis of the project are, we're, we're a behind-the-meter project for Ryerson on this, which means that we, we connect behind their revenue grade meter. Um, so by that, what I mean is that all the power is effectively consumed by Ryerson unless it's, uh, flows through, because their load is, is low enough. Um, so in, in that sense, we are basically a project for Ryerson, and, uh, as, uh, members of the community, they'll be paying tax and everything on the land. There's some development requirements that we have, and I believe we have some tax obligations there. Um, in, in terms of decommissioning, uh, we'll be posting bond, it's a requirement of the state that we post a bond. Who that's posted with is, uh, uh, an open question. Um, I, I'm not sure right now, the main developer on this project noted to me that there may not be in the ordinance right now clarity on whether we would post that with you or with the state. But in either case, we would post a bond, uh, right now, which will cover the costs, uh, of, um, uh, decommissioning with salvage value at the end of the project, which I believe for this project is 15 years. Um, there's also proposed vegetation buffer, uh, in between West Eager Road and the project, so, uh, the, the ability to see the project should be minimal.
Downstairs, yeah.
Above, stay the road. Um, so the ability to see the project should be minimal, uh, and there's no access road built off of any community roads right now, so the access will come through the, uh, 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 the truck bay at the, uh, Ryerson site. Um, so the, the community wouldn't be paying for it, wouldn't have any visibility on an access road as well.
Um, for the vis- uh, vegetation, what, what is it exactly that you all are putting down there? I'm sorry, for the vegeta- vegetation, what, what, what do you all, I see the green that is, uh, between the road and, uh, the, the, the solar panels?
I'm not sure right now, I believe that's in the second phase of design.
Okay.
Right now, the, the first permitting phase basically requires us to put a vegetation per, um, uh, vegetation buffer. Um, that vegetation buffer would be designed, my understanding is, one, to minimize runoff, and two, to, to minimize the, the visibility of the project.
Okay, there's, I'm assuming that would, uh, would help, uh, with those living across the way, but the panels would still be, I'm assuming that it probably would go. Vegetation would come high enough, but it wouldn't be too high, there would be a problem for the panels.
What I would anticipate, generally the panels would be, so they would start about here on me, and they would slant upwards, uh, at about a 40-degree angle. Um, and so initially, uh, it's possible that as you put the vegetation buffer in, that you, you'd be able to see over them. I think the, the, uh, long-term plan would be that as the vegetation grows up, you wouldn't see the panels. Most of the time, if there's an offset from the road, uh, the panels, uh, especially if the land is flat, uh, the panels will eventually be behind the vegetation.
So it's about 58 panels you're gonna put, or am I reading wrong?
Um, let me look at the site.
And the acres, it's about 15 acres?
I believe that's correct, and, uh, I don't know how many panels right now, sir, but I can look that up.
Okay. And this is your company, US So- Soil, Soilier?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay, and what's your name?
My name is John Gillis.
John, John, let me say this, uh, anything to.
Uh, Gillis, G.I.L.L.I.S.
Um, let me also say that any, anything that, the, the, don't take nothing personal today, that happened towards you, you have nothing to do with this. This comes from that direction. Because, uh, what I do appreciate you trying to do, and if I'm reading this correctly, your sole power is directly more for the steel company, am I correct?
That's correct, they're the primary consumer.
Okay, so, um, um, I, I, I appreciate that, and I don't, I don't want to rehash something that we all know at this point. But it was just the fact that consideration should have been given first to the people over here. We sit on this end, someone asked the question, why do we sit, he says the mayor's preference. Two years ago, I was sitting over there. I was sitting over there. I'm on punishment now, on the end, but God will take care of that. So, we're right, we kicked out the sandbox. So, um, I, I like what you're trying to do, uh, because at least at minimum, it's for the sake of that steel company. It's just, so you would know, this area was supposed to be for retail. We spent a lot of money for TIP seven for retail before he returned back to the board, as mayor. I yield my time.
Right, thank you. Trustee?
Are there, are there any other sites that are similar to what's being proposed here that we can take a look at?
I'm not aware of any sites right now, but, um, we, we're only proposing a site in this location, because it's the, the only feasible location on Ryerson site. Um, which, to be behind the meter with them, we would need to be on, on their land, on sites.
On site.
So I did do my research as it relates to the, to the, um, the relationship between Ryerson, and, um, I do appreciate that aspect of it. Um, in your, I guess in your, uh, in your opinion, um, there's been a, a issue or potential issue brought up around, um, the residents that will live, but they're, they're not residents of University Park, but of, of another community, um, as it, as it would relate to the building of this, um, the building of this, uh, solar farm. Um, do you have, do you foresee any issues that, um, may come about from building something like this, um, across the street or in a, uh, I guess semi-residential, it's not residential on our side, but residential on the other side, if you could speak on that and give us your opinion on that?
Yes, sir, so this is a common concern with solar development, um, residents across state, across the country are worried about that. The, the purpose of the proposed vegetation buffer, it is in part to address that and also to address runoff. Um, from a construction point of view, uh, we don't have any access to the site from, from West Eager Road. So nothing, uh, about the project should impact traffic on the, on that street, so everything would come through the Ryerson site on an access road that would be built, uh, by, by Ryerson to that site.
Yeah, and from, and from what I understand in the research that I did, the vegetation buffer, uh, kind of serves as, um, I guess a more beautification type of way, rather than having a fence. So, um, so to the question, I, I always do my research, I don't come to a meeting without reading my packet and diving deep into the understanding. That's why I have so many courses, because I make sure I read my packet and make sure I understand and do my research. So I, I do, um, appreciate that as well, and, um, I respect the concerns that trustee has around the, the village of Richmond Park, because I think we need to have a good relationship with those, with those, um, surrounding villages as well, so, um, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Scott?
One thing I do want to look at is the current traffic issue that may be occurring with the existing solar farm that's there. I think most people didn't even know that we had a solar farm, so I think that that's very telling, um, about the fact that I don't think there's gonna be additional traffic, there's no reason. Um, a lot of people didn't even know we have an existing solar farm that's been here for quite some time.
Yeah. Okay. Trustee Brooks, what are you saying, moving forward? Everybody's going solar. Move forward, I said move forward, move forward, okay.
What are we getting from this?
Yeah.
What's the profitability for?
Yeah, yeah, ask him more, yeah.
What's the profitability for the village on this?
She has to whisper, please, sorry, ma'am.
Probability, what is it for? I mean, I, I'm glad you read, you read your packet, but I respect some answers too. If you're reading your packet, you need to behave, give us some answers. So what is the probability for the village?
Uh, it's accurate.
Which one, how much are you estimating? Because you don't even, you have not experienced this anywhere else, so we're gonna be like the New Guinea pigs.
Um, so I'm not sure offhand, but I would be more than glad to get a response.
All right, thank you.
I, I am glad to get you out of those.
All right, thank you very much. Come on, move forward, have a good. For Mr. Frank, last one. Thank you, sir.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Frank, for his service. I don't have it, I'm glad to give you my contact.
Say the best of the last, they say?
So I have, I have some informational purposes documents for you. Thank you, Lieutenant Burke, welcome to Perry State College against Will County.
Thank you very much.
What they have, um, as I was saying, documents that I just issued to.
Can you have your quiet, please?
The document, the documents that I just forwarded to Mayor Rudens are for informational purposes, and you can file on the triple I FFC website. Um, there's some of the best practices followed by some of the entities. One of them is the village of Stanley Park. Second one is Perry State College, and third is Will County. So just some reference material that Mayor Paul, I don't know what I do, I'm in copy. And I was running a little maniac call tonight, um, so mayor, board trustees, public, public. Um, not necessarily anything vote, kind of a certain way, I don't have the issue, I don't have any issue with this, uh, this presentation. So the presentation there is provided, is more or less just informational in nature in case one of the.
I can't hear my voice.
So it's kind of dialogue, on what other municipalities are doing for their best, for their best practices. So it's just for, and, and for yourself, and very much for a lot of these.
So, anybody have any questions?
What is it?
This is with Frank, may have a couple of questions, this is regarding responsible bidding, right?
It's informational purposes for yourselves, it's, if you want to look at the documentation, I'm not pushing you anything, so I'm not asking you to vote on anything. So if you want to look at the documents that it presents.
So this is mine, I can make copies for the board?
Yes.
All right.
Then they can see what might suit the village.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Morgan?
So how can we ask any questions when we don't know what your documentation is, that you just gave the mayor? I don't know what you're talking about.
What would you like to know?
What you're talking about?
Your purpose, Frank, you're the union, I know you're union.
So I, my name's Frank DeJolino, Labor's upper five.
Okay.
What we have, what I have is I have three different. I have three different responsible processes. Sorry, Lieutenant Burke, second one I have is Perry State College, and the third one I have is Will County. So I was presenting that to the board, so they might be able to put a cap over it, more information.
So you want to bring a union in here?
No.
No, no, no. No, I am with the.
Ask me?
No, Labor, Laborers, Laborers upper five.
Thank you, Frank.
It's not clear what, what you're presenting, it's not.
I'm not really presenting, what I was just doing is I was giving the board.
Updates on the.
Like I said, what, what they can do is, the different organs and the different entities have.
Follow orders, we're not a bit better, making sure they follow certain ordinances. So are they, are they actually doing a?
Okay, but, is there a motion? So, move my books. Second, my, all in favor? Opposed? All right, thank you guys for your participation tonight.